Welcome to the Swanee County Board of County Commissioner meeting for June 20th, 2023. At this time, I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins to do the invocation. Commissioner Mobley to do the pledge if you'll all stand please.
Come and follow me come now. Thank you for allowing us to be in this place at this time. We thank you, God, for being the land we're living. We thank you, God, for being in this great nation, dear God, that you have so blessed us with. We, God, we pray, dear God, to bless us on this board tonight, dear God, to fulfill all the things that come before this board. Blessed those that's here today, oh God, and look on, dear God, the bereaved family, dear God, look on those who are sick and afflicted, and was ever given the praise and the glory in Christ, and we pray, amen.
Moving on to item number one, approval of minutes for the June 6, 2023 Professional Engineering Services Tabulation and the June 6, 2023 Regular Board Meeting.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Land.
On page, a couple corrections on the minutes, on page 374. I've already got with Eric here, but I will say it for public record. The remains were returned to Jasper and buried with full military honors earlier in the day. Actually, he's going to correct that to say that the remains were returned to Jasper earlier in the day and were buried and will be buried with full military honors the following Saturday, June 10th. And then at the bottom, the very last sentence, he thanked, there was a misspelled word. He thanked fire rescue. And our clerk over here has edited those. And then in addition to that, I have a Form 8B requested that we need to include, as far as public record, memorandum of voting conflict for county minutes for other local public officials. I believe our county attorney requested this be put into the record for Mr. Mobley recusing himself. This form has to be filled out per Florida statute, and he did, so they gave me a copy that's entered to the record.
Thank you. Any further corrections? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign.
Who made the motion?
I thought you made it.
No, he's asking who made it. I'll move to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Land. I need a second. Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries.
Johnny, get your gun now. Ready to go.
Moving on. Moving on to the consent agenda, we're going to pull item number three. Item number six was removed. So we have item two, item four and five, items seven through 10. Any discussion or a motion to approve?
I move to approve items two, four, five, and seven through 10.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. I'm just waiting on it to get to 5:35.
Was item three pulled for discussion or pulled first?
Well, I got to come back to it. I want to do this. Item number 11.
Why don't you quit that and start asking your own question? We're asking me.
At 5:30, item, we're going to move on to time specific item at 5:35 or sooner thereafter as the matter can be heard, hold a public hearing to consider approval of special permit number SP dash 23 dash 06 dash 01 by Crackerwood LLC to be granted a special permit under section 4.6 of the Swanee County Land Development Regulations for intensive agriculture to construct three poultry houses on property zone A1. Mr. Meeks.
Swear affirm testimony, you're about to give us the truth, the whole truth, not the truth, so help you God.
I do. Mr. Chairman, board members, this is a special permit request, SP dash 23 dash 06 dash 01. Application has been made by Crackerwood LLC to, under the section 14.6, to allow for an intensive ag operation to construct three breeder houses on property that is zoned agricultural one. The subject site is a 46.01 acre parcel located in section seven, township four south, range 12 east. Property has access off of State Road 51 to the western boundary of the property and has access off of 197th Road to the east. The site plan indicates the location would be to construct three breeder houses. The invoice spec for those houses chill on the sheet to be 42 by 600. We know that in past, those sizes have varied. Sometimes they run 43 by 510. Spec sheet shows 42 by 600, and that invoice total would be a total investment to the property of around $745,000 for the construction of those three intensive ag poultry houses. You have a proposed resolution for approval that's in your pocket. If you have any questions of me, I'll be happy to answer them, but at this time, I would enter the file into the record for your consideration.
Admit it is one.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks. Is there anyone wishing to? Let me just open this, open the floor to public comment. Is there anyone wishing to speak on this matter? I guess I should ask, is there any board questions of staff?
Yes, sir.
Now I'll open the floor to public comment. Is anybody wishing to speak on this matter? Seeing no one, I'll close public comment. Is there any further board discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Perkins.
I motion to approve the special permit for permit number SP 23 dash 06 dash 01 for Crackerwood LLC.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Moving back to item number three, under the consent agenda, acceptance of a $25,000 economic development grant award from Duke Energy. Mr. Norris.
As you guys know, where's she at? Okay, she's right here. She's easy to lose, you know what I mean? We brought you guys a proposal earlier on retail strategies, which was something that we wanted to do when we're moving forward, and I'm glad to report that we've already had several meetings and they're busy at work, so we're real tickled about that. But as a part of that process, you know, Chairman and Ms. Sutcher and I were at that meeting and with Duke Energy and Ms. Mary Swoop, 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 Swoop. You say, I say, okay, potato, potato. There's two O's in that name, so. But anyway, you know, Duke has done a great job of bringing programs and things to us and helping us in the economic development world. And so, you know, they offered this program, and you guys were gracious enough to let us apply for that. And probably Mary knows more about all the details than I do, so I'm going to ask Ms. Mary to come up, and Chris and I are going to stand aside, but I just want to let you know, obviously, this young lady's one that's been working with Mary on this, so she's probably not going to say anything.
Ms. Mary? First, Ms. Mary, Chris, do you have anything to say?
After.
Okay. Ms. Mary?
I won't take too long, but it's.
I got to have you name an address for the record.
That's right. Mary Swoop, Tallahassee, Florida, Duke Energy, Florida.
Thank you.
So I'm glad to be back here again. You know, when I was here a month or two ago, it was kind of the wink, wink, you're applying for the grant, but Duke Energy, with our grants program, we were really excited that we had five communities that decided to try out retail strategies. As we told you before, we feel like retail is a pathway to economic development. Most times people think about economic development, think of industrial development, manufacturing, but we also know that retail and commercial development is very important, and how a community brings that together and strengthens what they already have, but brings more in and grows their community is based on this as well. It's part of quality of life that will add to the other economic development as well. So we were so pleased that you guys had applied for a grant. I was not a part of the grant program. I didn't even read the grants when they came in. I wanted to stay far away from it, but you guys were awarded, and it's so fun when I get to act like it's a real check, but it's a check for $25,000. I believe that Chris has already been working with our grants program on getting the money so the money's ready to roll and to help you guys, but we're not going to let you drop. We're not going to leave you. We're here to support you through it all.
On behalf of the county commissioners, we greatly appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Before we get to the picture, let me just get this passed so I don't forget, and we'll get the picture. So is there any further discussion on this, or do I have a motion to approve?
I mean, Ms. Chris.
Ms. McCris, did you want to speak?
She will have to, once I forget.
All right. So move, Mr. Chairman. Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. Ms. Chris, you're up.
She's so shy. She's going to say thank you.
That's exactly right.
About all you can get out of me, so.
I just wanted to thank Duke Energy for allowing us to have this grant opportunity, and to thank Ms. Mary for coming to present the check to us today. We so appreciate the educational opportunities that they provide to us through the next level events that they do. They're getting ready to do another one in a couple of weeks, and we'll be at that as well. And we're already in the process of working with retail strategies, and we really appreciate them introducing retail strategies to us. We're very excited about this partnership, and we look forward to what we can do together. Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you, thank you, thanks. Do you want to move it up here or down there?
What's it?
Wherever you want to go. We'll go there, bro.
And we're in Word Top.
It wouldn't be natural if you weren't, right? Oh, no, no, I'm on the end.
You and Chris can do it.
No, no, you don't, you don't.
Moving on. Three, two, one, smile. I have one thing here.
That's just my chicken scratch about.
Figure out how to say it. I need to readdress the consensus on the fire station that we did earlier in the workshop. We can't really do that during a workshop, so I need a, I'd actually like to have a vote on discontinuing that location as a, as a place for the fire station, fire station number six.
And look at, look at a different location.
Different locations.
Yes.
So move.
Well, let's get some discussion here before we go to do it. Has anybody got a problem with this? Is there any discussion? Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Mr. Adams, does that cover what you need? That was all I had on, I'm sorry, that was constitutional officers, not staff items. Is there any constitutional officers, has anything? I'm all discombobulated this afternoon.
That four hour meeting, we just come out of.
Any staff items?
I already took up an hour, every time. First off, Chairman Commissioners, I want to thank you guys for having the workshop and giving us the opportunity to discuss some issues that are needing to be discussed. Just want to give you an update. We've been, we've been working on this for a while, and we got our safety inspection done last week from the state fire college, and we passed with flying colors, with the exception of a couple small SOP word changes that she would like to see to make everything worded the way that she wanted to see it in our SOPs. It was a great help. I've got to give the credit, was all our health and safety officer dad, Cervantes, he had been through this when he worked for Columbia County, so it was an easy transition to have him help us out with ours, but he spent several weeks putting everything together that was needed to go through that inspection. This will open us up now to where we're eligible for several grant opportunities through the state fire college, so, but I just wanted to give you guys an update on that, that we passed it with flying colors, so.
Good news. Thank you, Chief Andy. Any other staff items? Any commissioner items, since I already took my turn?
Yes, sir.
Any county attorney items?
No, sir.
Man, this is going to be quick. Well, I only got the last page here. General business, item number 12, discuss with possible board action final plat approval of the replat of Duke's Place subdivision. Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, this is a final approval of a replat of Duke's Place subdivision. We brought this preliminary approval to the board a little more than a month ago. The revision of the plat has to do with, as we had previously discussed, some distance requirements through DOT about the lack of getting the required number of driveways, and so there needed to be some of the lots combined to make larger properties, and DOT was going to limit those access points on State Road 51. So you do have a decrease in the overall total lots from the original plat, and you do have some of them, those lots that are actually a little larger. So we've already had this plat come before the board previously, and we brought the revisions through a preliminary approval. You have the plats before you tonight for signature of the chairman if the board so chooses to approve the plat, along with the, you have the application, the title opinion that's been provided to the county in regard to the replat.
Any questions, Mr. Meeks? Seeing none, can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Hale.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o.
Thank you, once again, gentlemen.
Item number 13, discuss with possible board action establishing a sale price of surplus property located on 10th Terrace.
As you might be aware, this was on the agenda a couple meetings ago, we pulled it to revisit it to make sure that what wasn't a need for the public, and have the appraisal in your packet, and we're prepared to move forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Rayo.
And I did ask for that to be pulled. It's in my district, and myself and Mr. Scott and Jason had talked about it. I was thinking this was an old dirt boat rent that was utilized at some point in time or another, and it may have been, but it's not anymore after going and looking at it. I mean, because we have, we talk about this, a lot of canoeers and people kayaking and having an on and off boarding place. I thought it might be a good location, but it's not, so.
Fair enough.
Yeah.
Fair enough. Any further discussion? Let's see, it's agreed on, what was the price on it? It was 30,000, is that right, Mr. Scott? Can I get a motion to approve?
So move.
Was needed to set a price.
Oh, we got to set the price on? I thought that's what we was doing.
We accepting the land appraisal report, I guess is.
So do you need two motions there?
No, just, just.
Just a motion to set the price at 30,000?
Right.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Perkins.
For motion to set a price at 30,000 for the property located on 10th Terrace, property ID number 0401S dash 12E dash 09421 dash 180490.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. Item number 14, discuss with possible board action the purchase of property for economic development. Mr. Scott.
This is a five acre parcel that is along the entranceway into Benner Holtz. The property owner approached, actually Ron, at one point, and shared that he was interested in selling if the county was interested. It's a piece of property that economic development feels like we could utilize for enticing folks to maybe relocate here. We've been trying to purchase any properties that are in the Catalysite area, and, and so we think it'd be a good fit. We had appraisal done. The property owner asked for $1,000 over the appraisal rate, and I told him what the appraisal price was. He said he would accept that price, so it's my recommendation to move forward with the purchase and have Mr. The county attorney take care of anything he needs to on the selling price, on the selling process.
Any questions?
And again, just for the record, it was appraised at 58,000. The gentleman asked for 59, but he's willing to take the 58,000.
So the sale price will be 58,000 dollars?
Right, right. And again, that's a five acre parcel.
Any questions, Mr. Scott?
Motion.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Mobley. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. Are there any additional agenda items?
Oh, I'm sorry. Commissioner Land, you wanted to bring forth the, the policy that we were going to discuss about getting rid of PACE, but we needed to do that during this meeting.
Yeah, 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 I thought you were. But I'll do it. I thought we were going to address, remember, we talked about in our workshop for the public that wasn't here, we had a workshop that started at 1:00, and that's another reason why none of us were in ties, because actually Commissioner Hale forgot his, so we didn't want to make him be the only guy without one, so we, none of us wore one, anyway. But nonetheless, in that workshop, we talked about the PACE and tax collector property prader both encouraged us to make a decision on that sooner than later. We talked about in that workshop, making that motion to revoke, I guess, those agreements, Mr. Chairman.
Right, so, yeah, we currently have a, an agreement with several companies who administer PACE loans pursuant to interlocal agreements with the county. Each and all of those agreements have a termination clause, and so I need a board action to terminate those contracts, and I'll move forward with the appropriate letter informing them of saying.
Right.
So do I have a motion to terminate all PACE contracts?
So moved.
Motion by, motion by Commissioner Land, second by Commissioner Perkins. All in favor, aye. Aye. All opposed, same sign. Motion carries five o. The part you've all been waiting for, public concerns and comments. Mr. Jimmy? Name and address for the record, please, sir.
Jimmy Pittman, Pittman Engineering. On behalf of the firm, I'd just like to thank all of you and all staff involved for the opportunity to work for y'all again on the County Road 49 project. Don't take that for granted, and as always, we'll give it our best, and just thank you for that, and I offer again, anytime anybody needs any questions to be answered, if I can help in any way, we'll be happy to do that.
Did you figure out a way to get it paved all the way down?
We'll, we'll get there. We'll get there.
Think that was a no?
For the time being, I would say.
He's pretty good, though, because I have pushed him before, and he works miracles.
Uh-huh. Yeah.
Bo Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. I just want to thank y'all for having a workshop. Took you a while, but you got it in, and four hours later, aren't y'all happier?
No, I wish we'd got it all done, but we'll continue on.
That's right, we'll come back. It's quite well, and at least Travis got to talk to Don publicly, but thank you very much.
We appreciate the compliment.
Wait till the meeting's over and come around the corner.
Better catch me.
I do want to say something on that, though, juggling, but we did say to look for another
piece of property. I definitely want to keep it, though, to that area that it was originally meant to be, sir, you know, 129 West, whatever y'all saying, whatever the board comes up with, but I, I mean, I don't want to, I want to move it to Branford, you know, but you know what I'm saying. I mean, we didn't specify that, but definitely just be mindful of that, so.
Well, I'm sure it'll all come back for board approval before anything's done, so you'll have another stab at it, Commissioner Hale, but we appreciate it. Thank you.
Sharpen my pen when I come back.
Anyone else wishing to speak? I knew I just had to give it long enough. Name and address for the record, please, ma'am.
My name's Kat Meeks Bass, and my, I'm a newlywed, so I've got two places. My place in town is 817 Blackburn Avenue Southwest, and my husband is at 39th Place in Welborn, which is why I'm here. First up, I wanted to introduce myself, though. I am the new grant writer, independent contractor for City of Live Oak, so.
Nice to meet you.
Yeah, thank you very much. I hope to be able to do some more for the city, so, which needs to be done, so. But the reason why I came, our road, 39th Place, is a Lime Rock Road. It's in very bad condition, hasn't been graded in over three years. Horrible potholes throughout the roadway. I don't know the distance, but there are 34 residents and two businesses on that road. It serves a lot of people on a daily basis. I go the long way home. We live in the middle of 39th Place. I go the long route because it's better for my car, fewer potholes to go the long way. 39th Place enters just near the Busy Bee at Welborn and empties out at Hurston Gardens, just beyond Hurston Gardens, so onto US 90. It's in such bad shape, my husband's had to have $600 worth of repair work done to his vehicle. We've also, unfortunately, the US Post Office in Welborn, because of the condition of the road, they have moved. We no longer get mail at our residence. They have established a metal mailbox at the end of the road where we have to go now. Quick personal story, I have a disabled daughter who is 19 years old and severely autistic. She enjoyed being able to go to the mailbox and get the mail, because that was one thing that she could do independently. I can't let her do that at my house in town because it's too dangerous, but she would go to our mailbox on 39th Place and get the mail for Daddy Mike and, and turn around with the biggest smile on her face. That's been taken away. I know you can't impact that, but had the road been repaired on a regular basis, it needs to be graded at least annually, preferably twice annually, and I don't think that's too much to ask. So I'm, I'm asking for the road to be graded, and if I need to go somewhere else, DOT or whoever, wherever, please let me know.
Mr. Chairman. Hang on just a second, Commissioner Mobley.
We've just been working on that.
I can go ahead and update.
We've been working on that a couple weeks, trying to get something done. I just hadn't brought it front of the board with another solution, but I'll add them.
All right, I can go ahead and fill you in. Commissioner Mobley, met with myself and the county administrator. There are other residents of your road who share your frustration, and it's not lost on anyone. The issue that comes up, and this is just the county attorney speaking, so, you know, I'm trying to dodge the bullets here, but quite frankly, is the county decided back in the 80s to not take over maintenance of new roads, and so. And so, one of the questions that was before us when I met with some of Mr. Mobley's constituents was they thought that the road had previously been maintained by the county and if that was so, then that'd be wonderful, because then we could just correct the mistake that had been happening and go ahead and pave the road. And pursuant to that, I've spoken with Mr. Scott and Mr. Scott and Ms. Frederickson have both been looking to try to find an old map or to find somebody that remembers grading that road, so there could be a, not a change in policy, but a correction of a mistake, if that's what it wa, if it truly was, I mean, I'm not trying to grade anything, but if it truly was a mistake, to go ahead and fix it. Thus far, and I invite Commissioner Scott to correct me if I'm wrong, that effort has been unsuccessful, but it's not for lack of trying to locate it. The reason the road was paved three years ago was because-
It's not paved.
Or, I'm not paved. The reason it had been graded and, and county funds had been spent on maintenance was there was a hurricane declaration at that point in time, and I think there's an awful lot of commissioners that will say, well, there's an awful lot of private roads, I'm using air quotes here, that got an awful lot of maintenance during that declaration of emergency, but that can't extend, that declaration ended. And so, the pickle that arises is we can't direct county funds to a private enterprise. That's how people go to ju- And I'm not arguing about the merits at all, and that's kind of where we're at.
How can that be considered a private road when 34 residents live on it? I don't understand that. I don't understand that. I think that's an excuse and I don't want to hear excuses.
The one thing I'll say is, and I'm not trying to put any pressure on anybody on the board, that's simply a policy.
I don't want to hear policy, I just want the road to be repaired. I don't want it to be paved, I know it's a huge expense. I just want it to be graded. Whoever can handle that, I don't want to hear policy, I just want the road fixed. 34 residents and two businesses that pay a lot of taxes. That's it.
Mr. Chairman. Mr. Hale.
The only thing I can add, I mean, I've had this come up in my district as well. We, we went through some-
We all have.
Yeah, we went through some MSBUs, I don't know if you're familiar with those. We've looked at that. I think several roads have been accomplished doing that, but if there's a larger land owner, then it's basically you guys pay for it, but you have, it's on your taxes over the end of your 20 years, 15 years, whatever it is. So, that way it doesn't overly impact you a year, but the problem is, you may have one acre of road frontage and someone else may have 40 acres or 20 or whatever, so they pay more, and getting them on board with that can be challenging. But that was one thing. The other is, like you said, during the hurricanes and things, that opens up, you know, we gotta have rescue to be able to access those and things like that. I didn't do any of that.
Which is difficult right now.
Yeah, I, I didn't do any in my district during that time. I think some other commissioners did, but because I knew I couldn't, if I couldn't do for one, I couldn't do for all. I didn't want to do that. I didn't want to be that person, but anyhow, it's challenging, I promise you. I've been up against it myself. We've got some local contractors. I know that at least two, maybe three roads in my district that are private roads like yours, have 10 to 20 people that live on it. They pay a local guy to come out, you know, annually, like you say, twice a year. He's got a small grader, he knocks it out and just a couple hundred dollars, you know, and he takes care of that for them, so. I mean, there are some options there, once you think, it's not personal, he's, I can promise you, he's not doing this per-
If there are businesses that would do that, that I could contact and I can reach out to our residents, but again, it's 34 residents that pay a ton of taxes. It's just not right, so, but if, if there is somebody that I can reach out to, please let me know.
I've got, I've got the same issue in my district right now. I just went and looked at it a couple of weeks ago. Same issue you've got there. A lot of people live on this road. They had a fire there and I think the fire truck even got stuck down there, but it's the same issue.
Which would happen if they came down our road.
Well, I get it, but, you know, we're bound by the law and that's, that's what we're dealing with here, is we're not avoiding it. I, I know exactly where you're talking about. I've rode down that road, so I understand where you're coming from, but we've got to do what we're bound by.
I understand. And Commissioner Mobley, you had mentioned in passing conversation, something about the National Guard may have that equipment? Do you know if that's?
I did reach out, but I think there would be a charge on that as well.
Well, which is fine, but as long as it's reasonable. If it's a couple hundred dollars, that's, that's bearable, but this is a long road.
And that's to maintain, I think it was more than like 12, 1500 to get it up and go and bring rock and whatever you need, but it's just, and I, we can, I can definitely give you the name of that person.
Okay, all right. Thank you, guys. I appreciate it.
Anybody else? Seeing none, we'll move forward to administrators' comments and information.
One thing I'd like to add is if you just keep the Thomas, Clark, and Herring family in your prayers. They're all county, county workers that had issues and deaths and so.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Adams, you have anything additional to add?
No, sir.
Commissioner Perkins?
No, just give a meeting, everybody, safe travel back home, roads are wet, safe travel.
Mr. Mobley?
Appreciate everybody for coming.
Mr. Land?
Just prayers for those that have suffered some tragic events and then continue to pay for the Rickerson family over in Jasper. Police chief killed in a tragic car accident last week, but on that side.
Mr. Hale?
No, just appreciate everybody coming, had a good workshop and thank the employees, all of them, all departments. They, we couldn't do it without them.
Thank you, sir. I just, I'm glad everybody's here. It's nice to see a room full of people. I know you don't agree with us all the time, but we like, we like to hear what you have to say and we're glad you're here and that's about all I got. We're gonna shorten it up here. I just need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Land, all in favor, aye.
Aye.